Welcome to the meeting of the Infrastructure Services and Networks. We've got a few apologies today but we'll do those after the public forum. We've got Mrs Van Zyl here. Welcome. Please come up to the seat and talk to us about Moscow Water Supply and its fluoridation. Sorry for the... We've got a few apologies today, sorry there's people away on council business. But we're all keenly listening to you. Yep, push that. Take a seat if you like or you're welcome to stand whichever you feel most comfortable with.
I actually think this around my feet but I'm quite happy to sit down later for questions if you wish.
Thank you.
Where is that? I've actually brought my timer along because I'm allowed about five minutes I believe and I don't want to go over that so...
It's working.
Very good, thank you.
There we go. Anyway, good afternoon all and I don't know that I'm happy to be here but I am anyway. I must make it quite clear that I have absolutely no dental or medical qualifications whatsoever, nor do I actually belong to any anti-fluoride organisation at the moment, though this may change in the foreseeable future. Now, I have to write this down because I tend to waffle. I wish to address you on a contentious issue which is very personal to me, that is sodium fluoride, silicon, silica, whatever, fluoride in Moscow's...
That's better, sorry about that.
We're not quite used to all this. Council must surely be aware that sodium fluoride is a toxic man-made industrial poison imported from Belgium and it's the main component, so I'm told, in the manufacture of rat poison, chemical sprays and pesticides. It was first added to Dunedin's water in May 1967, touted as being an aid to dental health. And yet you still allow this to be added to a population's water supply. I must say I felt a small degree of sympathy for this council because you've inherited this problem and it is a problem. The addition apparently is at the lower end of a scale, that is 0.7% per litre. It's recommended by the Ministry of Health. How this is monitored to each consumer's intake hasn't been explained. Now, calcium fluoride is derived from natural sources, leached from rocks and soil, our rivers and streams, but not so sodium fluoride and industrial waste. The Ministry of Health's theories that sodium fluoride is beneficial to combating dental decay is, in my opinion, quite ludicrous. Both supporters and opponents of sodium fluoride have totally disregarded and discredited this outdated research. Recent research however has revealed that no way can putting sodium fluoride into water can contribute to dental health and when two opposing factions actually agree on a point, one should take notice. It may interest council to note that the United States are in the process of banning completely sodium fluoride from all community waters, citing this as an unfortunate experiment. This is the 21st century. You are basing the recommendations of the Ministry of Health's outdated research. I doubt that researchers and technicians would provide conclusive evidence of any detrimental effects on the human body, but it does have an effect on the body over a period of time. Any anti-fluoride organisation looks at the whole picture rather than focusing on one aspect and council would do well to follow this example. There is a groundswell of opposition to sodium fluoride and this is growing. People are not prepared to blindly accept the dictates of the Ministry of Health, especially now that they are aware of what sodium fluoride is comprised of and who could blame them. Mass medication should not be forced on any person. It is each individual's choice to ingest what they choose, not a council's or a district health board or a ministry of health. For example, if I want to put a squirt of lemon juice into my glass of water, that's my choice, but it certainly shouldn't be anything to do with council's, DHBs or Ministry of Health. I am extremely upset with being forced to swallow water with this poison in it. I was never consulted, never asked for, don't want it, nor would I agree to it. It does have an effect on your skeletal effect, structure. Picture this, stick with me on this. You have a glass of water fluoridated, you swallow it, it bypasses your teeth, it goes into your system, it lurks there insidiously infiltrating your bones and your soft tissue. Well, that's the fastest five minutes I've ever had. Mind you, it's made in China so that might explode to it. A few minutes more. If anyone has any doubt about fluoride, I would actually say this was essential reading. It's called The Fluoride Deception by Christopher Bryson. I picked this up from the Moscow library one Friday night, wasn't much on the TV so I sat down to read it. And at half past two on a Saturday morning, I was still reading it, but it was chilling. It was horrible how multinational corporations and that were devious underhand in the manipulation of the public. It really is an excellent book and I would urge anyone to have a good look at it. Now, this changes to the Moscow Water Supply. It was the word fluoride that I couldn't understand why it was put into water. I mean, it doesn't purify water, not that I'm aware of. So when I looked it up at the Moscow library, I couldn't believe it was actually Sodo, silicon, whatever. I could never get my tongue around that. So I had a water filter installed at an enormous cost of $240. I rang up on the Monday morning, the water filter supplier couldn't get to me until Thursday late afternoon because he said he was absolutely inundated with calls from Moscow residents wanting filters. He came, he installed, I paid him, I sent the account in a covering letter to the DCC. But they misfiled it, how convenient. So I wrote again to Sue Bedros and she very kindly sent me a letter back saying, and I quote, "Here at the Dunedin City Council, we follow the government guidelines on this issue and for that reason we would not reimburse a resident who installs a water filter because they believe fluoride is a poison. Well, I think we've come to the conclusion that fluoride is a poison, so I expect to be paid. Your cheque, I hope, will be in the post." I live in hope. Now, I think that is about all, oh, except one more thing, I'll put that away because that's dead at the moment, is that every tube of fluoridated toothpaste that I've discovered in our supermarkets has a health warning on it that any child six years of age or under is not to use that toothpaste. I found that quite chilling, it really is. And if they do ingest it, I mean, you've got a nice red, white and blue one coming out of a tube and any child might think, ooh, that's like a sweetie and bite a bit off and swallow it. You'll have to seek medical advice right away and/or else ring the poison centre. And what I can't understand is if we're supposed to drink six to eight glasses of fluoridated water, or water with fluoridation, in a day, why is a child not allowed to have this fluoridated toothpaste? There must be something wrong with fluoride. It's really made me wonder. Anyway, thank you all for your time, I do appreciate it and I hope I haven't held you up.
Thank you, Mrs Van Zyl. You indicated you're happy to take questions. Any questions? Thank you.
I've stunned you.
Thank you. Some of us have had many submissions along each side. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Damien, would you mind turning that microphone? Thank you. Just go to the meeting proper now, the Infrastructure Services and Networks Committee. Apologies have been received from councillors Andrew Wiley, Conrad Stedman, Lee Vanderbusch, Chris Danes and the mayor Dave Cull. Some, if not all, are out on council business. I'll move them heavily seconded. Thank you, councillor Elder. All in... Any comments? All in favour, please say aye. Against, carried, thank you. Confirmed the agenda. I'll move that the committee confirms the agenda with the following alterations in regards to standing order, 21.1, option C be adopted in relation to moving and seconding and speaking to amendments. Seconded, councillor Hall, thank you. Oh, you... Sorry, you don't want to confirm that, you're sorry. Item 11, what would you like?
I'd say it's cancelled.
What about it? Oh, yeah, sorry, we do that at the end. I'll call for those afterwards, okay? So you're happy to second the agenda, confirmation of agenda, thank you. Any discussion? All in favour, please say aye. Aye against carried, thank you. Declaration of interests. I'll happily move, noting that I've got a new one, the Targa Hockey Association. Any other... I'm not sure that that's appropriate. Councillor Hall?
I'm retired as a director of Mekuan Horlage.
Thank you. He's retired as a director of Mekuan Horlage, okay. Any other matters? Seconded, thank you. Jim, all in... Noting, sorry, we'll note the amendments of the elected members' interest register and will confirm the proposed management plan. I'll move seconded, Jim, sorry. All in favour, please say aye. Aye against carried, thank you. Part A reports, something that excites me, options and alternatives for the diversion of organic waste. Welcome, Chris and Catherine. I've already had one councillor say, well, this is a great report, so that's a good start. Would you like to speak to it?
I think we're just happy to take questions.
Nothing from you, Chris?
No, I'm happy to take the report as written.
Okay, thank you. Questions, councillor Hawkins.
Thanks, Madam Chair, and thank you. As the councillor alluded to, it is a fantastic paper. My question's around really what happens from here and my reading of this is that this will come back as an option as part of the Waste Minimisation, Management and Minimisation Plan, the resourcing implications of which will be canvassed through the next annual plan round. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, but...
Yes, yep, that's correct, yes.
And just between now and then, then, this paper sets out recommendations of some paths to follow and others not to. We're not being asked to affirm that or otherwise at this stage, but is that something, will those options come back? Essentially, what will get progressed to a more detailed level to inform that budget decision?
I think so and I think if any councillor has very strong views, I should feed them in through councillor O'Malley and councillor Newell, who are on that working party. I think would be the way and so if you've got strong views about some of the options, either for or against, that are raised in here, that would be helpful.
Okay, so it's not, so it won't come back to committee for decision around...
Oh, no, we'll come back. No, we'll come back, but I think if you've got, you know, giving a lead to the councillors early on would be helpful. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So, yeah, we intended for the, as you go through, business case approach to some of the stuff as part of the Waste Management Minimisation Plan, that, yeah, will be coming back to council obviously with the shortlist of options, recommended options etc.
And I imagine some of this we workshopped at some stage.
Yeah.
Councillor O'Malley.
Yeah, I was just going to comment at the comments section, but I just want to ask a question now that councillor Hawkins asks, which is, this is going to be effectively an opening document to which the Waste Minimisation Plan will then reference and move on from there, right?
Yes, correct.
Councillor Elder?
You might ask my question and it was...
It's fine.
We worked up those.
Thank you. Councillor Lord?
Yeah, look, Chris, I just had a number of questions. I'm just trying to, I've read through the report and there's a lot of what it says in the report as facts, but it doesn't actually sort of, there's not a lot of debate. So, question, for example, what's the difference between, say, me going home and composting all my green waste and all my lawn clippings and everything and not taking it to the tip, or not putting it out in a black bin which is contaminating 43%? Like, I get all that, I get that there's 26% of what's going to the tip is organic waste, but if I, say, compost at home, what's the net result different than if we compost by tipping it all in the landfill? Like, I'm just trying to work out what the problem is.
Well, I guess there's a number of factors you could go into there, but I guess one of the main ones is obviously if we're not having to collect it or process it or anything else and obviously there's a bit of a saving in just even just the carbon, getting it to the landfill for a start, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
But it's obviously just if you're addressing it, sorting the problem at home yourself and then reusing it, it's just actually a circular economy, closed loop, if you're using it back in your own garden.
Yep, okay.
It's just a simpler approach to the same end goal.
Okay, yeah, but there's no, I mean, ultimately there is no difference whether it rots away in the landfill or... If you put the green waste that's in, like, when we close the tip eventually, we put a big clay cover over it, I assume, a couple of metre or metre and a half or something and pack it all down, would, does anyone know if the methane and that, I mean, I know we've got a collection service in place, but if it wasn't collected, would it escape through that clay eventually or does it just break down in there or does anyone know?
Yeah, no, I could almost guarantee it'll escape. Yeah, yeah, so the only way is if we're actually drawing it down and using the gas extraction system, then obviously we're getting rid of it before it escapes. But I think even, yeah, to be brutally honest, even the areas of the closed landfill at the moment, if the gas collection system is turned off for any period of time, maintenance on the gas engine or something like that, you definitely notice...
Cracks in the clay and stuff.
The odour starting to come out of there with the methane, yep.
I mean, I'm just a bit ignorant here, but when you burn the methane through the power plant, what are the byproducts given off from the burnt methane? Is that any gases there that are harmful or are they just considered less harmful than methane?
Yeah, depends on your approaches, but it's the same as any combustion engine basically, so it's just using methane as a fuel, so you've still got carbon dioxide being produced, yep.
Yep, okay. Oh, now, the other question I realise, it relates to, on page 38, you talk about the fact that the regional council allow landfill of green waste as a, you know, legal, you're allowed to do it. So they competed around the road, he's sitting there, potentially, whatever he does, stuff it in a galley or compost, whatever, it all becomes, the same process happening, but there'll be no control of leachate out of what he's doing probably or...
Well, as far as we're aware, because it's a permitted activity, there's no consent conditions, so there's no control over leachate or anything else like that.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
It'd be a regional council issue, not one for us.
Yes, it's a regional council issue, yeah. It's a permitted activity under the Ataga Regional Council.
Yeah. Now, the other question that's used in the report, it says about the fact that it makes it difficult to compete with, like, if he's, if you can go and dump it there nice and cheaply, why would you take it to us and then we lose the mass of having it all if we decided to do something with it, like composting or something? Is that a problem?
Well, yeah, if we're actually trying to have a significant impact on diversion of waste from landfill and that kind of thing, then we sort of need that mechanism to be able to control where that waste is going and if we're starting to say, well, we're going to provide a solution, but it costs money or it's coming from rat piles or something, then there's always going to be that cheaper option where people can go instead of...
Yep.
So, you know, we could, I don't know, build a fairly costly piece of infrastructure to deal with green waste and then find that we don't get any.
At the moment, if, do you know the price of, like, if I bought a load of just green waste into the tip or garden, hedge cuttings, whatever, what sort of price it would cost me to get rid of that?
Actually, I can't tell you off the top of my head, sorry.
I should have asked that question.
Yeah, that's a question I should have seen coming.
Yeah. Well, the question, so Miss Mashas just said it was probably about $21, so my question that follows on from that is, is that price based on, is that price set as opposed to a yoot load of old batteries or something, according to what they perceived? Well, well, say if I took a yoot load of mixed rubbish versus what it cost me more? Yeah. I can't hide them. The green waste is discounted.
Because they're going to put it in a separate area.
I just note that I took a fairly full yoot load of rubbish to the tip in Wanaka recently and it was green waste and it was $6.20 and I sort of thought, well, why do we charge so much for green waste? Is it because they're ongoing looking at what the cost to the environment will be in the creation of methane or how does that?
So, there's, with composting, there's process involved, so it's assisting with the cost of that, but your green waste material doesn't attract the tax of emissions trading scheme. So there will, over time, as certainly general waste charges increase, as emission trading scheme, you know, obligations increase, green waste won't, so, you know, anywhere near to the same degree. So it will become a larger gap over time.
Thank you, councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just picking up on councillor Lord's question around home composting, the spectre was raised in the report around people not doing it properly and the potential environmental impact of that. So while it might be cheaper or more efficient for us financially if people did it themselves, a municipal system would have greater control over it being done as effectively as it could be?
Yeah, well, that's correct. I mean, a proper composting pile does need to be looked after to make sure it's operating correctly and so obviously people can compost at home, but they might give up because they're not really getting any good results out of it. Obviously, if we're doing it in controlled circumstances, with someone being paid to look after it, then we're going to get better results, or likely to get better results, sorry.
There's slightly more to it than just throwing your food scraps in a pile. Do we know, do we have any idea of how, do we know how widespread an issue that is or how, I mean, is it something that we're dealing with through education programmes around that? I didn't realise, I'd never really considered it to be honest until I read this, but...
We don't know how widespread it is. It's sort of anecdotal as you talk to people and they're like, oh, yes, I am composting, but I'm not sure if I'm doing it right. We have in the past run composting workshops. What we found, though, it was kind of attracting people who are compost enthusiasts, it was aimed at quite a high level. So what we need to go back and look at, how do we put in place an education programme for introducing people to composting practices?
Thank you, councillor Hall.
Did you know that since the fire out at Kaiko Valley that he's no longer tipping in that area? He's been banned from it, but he's now tipping in an area that he owns above the golf course. He's no longer tipping in Kaiko Valley's place.
Well, no, I wasn't aware of that, no.
I think the location isn't so relevant though.
Oh, it is very relevant because it's actually, it's got a very small area you can tip in.
Okay.
Okay, well, that could be encouraging.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah. Councillor Gary?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your report. My question is around feedback from the community and I just wonder, in diversion of waste, where you thought the community is up to in terms of readiness for municipal collection of food waste and of garden waste?
Once again, it's only anecdotal. There has been some, some of the submissions on the tenure plan have included talking about organic waste. It's one of those ones that we're not really measuring, we just know that there is often requests that come in about why don't we do organics collection like Christchurch does or why don't we do it like someone else does? So it's, we're not really measuring it as such, we just know that there is at least a core sector out there that are keen. I can imagine there's also others that wouldn't want that serviced at all.
And I guess I was thinking, the community that I live in, certainly that question's been asked many times, but I wondered how widespread it was across the community that you know of around that readiness for it.
I can't actually give you any accurate detail at the moment, all I can say is, Kath could probably expand on this a bit, is when it was last proposed during the creation of our current WMP, there was actually quite a bit of community interest, but it was less than 50%, but there was, I think it ended up in the 40s, 40% of the people that were actually surveyed.
What year was that?
I'll let Kath fill over the details.
We did a survey in 2008 in the lead up to the existing cursei collection service and the organics collection service at the time was very new concept. In the paper survey, we only got 26% of people who would be interested in it. In the telephone survey where there was an opportunity for dialogue, it was more, however, it just didn't get over 50%, so we didn't get it across the board at the time.
No other questions from the council, I've just got one question and I was quite surprised by the acceptance, I thought, I read, of in-sinkerators as a way of dealing with waste. I had always understood that they weren't popular or accepted and that would process almost twice. It would lead to double processing of rubbish that way, the waste. Can I have any comment from you about how acceptable that is, seen as a means of dealing with it?
Yeah, it works lyrical for a bit, but I think there has been a bit of resistance from people in my former career in regards to using the wastewater system as a rubbish disposal system as well. It's actually been encouraged in some parts of North America and those kind of areas now, where they're actually encouraging new houses to have in-sinkerator, well, that's a brand name, that type of system in the house, because they're doing digestion at wastewater treatment plants, so if they get that waste to the treatment plant, then they digest it and produce electricity from the gas.
I suppose the question is, I should have pretty said that you will be talking to Tom's team at some stage to ensure that the messaging is, that the capacity is there to do the work that may come from this, because...
Yeah, at the moment, this is obviously just an options report, I mean, there is an option to be considered, whether it's actually practical in a mainly gravity sewer system, I would at that stage probably say probably not.
And it would diminish the effectiveness of a pick-up system as well, I presume?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's just getting that messaging right.
It must be acknowledged that is a perfectly good option, which may not quite work in the Dunedin environment.
Thank you. Anyone wish to move that report? Thank you, councillor Newell, councillor O'Malley, seconded it. So that was the end of the questions, any company you'd like to speak to it?
Thanks very much for your report.
Actually, I should have given councillor Newell's mover the first right, no, you're fine, thank you. Apologies, councillor O'Malley.
He's so fast at the button. Thank you very much for this report and I think it's very thorough when it comes to household methane-producing materials. We obviously have got industrial methane-producing materials, which has really not been a big part of this, like timber and other such things. So I welcome this and as councillor Lord pointed out, it's got, it really identifies problems rather than solutions and as you said in the question and answers, this is opening up all of the options that we're going to go forward with. So I sort of am receiving this document back to the committee as saying that this is a good grounding place in which we're going to start the discussion and then that we will be going backwards and forwards between council from the governance perspective and the operational perspective from you guys to knock this path forward and make sure we capture everything as it's heading out so that we can eventually minimise what goes into the landfill. So thank you very much for the support and my perspective is that we'll be using now this as a foundation document. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hawkins.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks to the staff for doing this work. I remember the discussion in 2008 and unfortunately we didn't have either the popular or political will at the time to progress this, but I think both of those have shifted noticeably since then and I look forward to seeing this as part of a wider rethink of how we invest in... wider rethink of how we invest in waste management and minimisation through the renewal of that plan. I think my only real, the only disappointment for me, I think, is that we are not discussing the resourcing implications of these alongside our other significant projects as part of the current ten year plan budget cycle, both in terms of the waste management work, and also potentially projects delivering on the energy plan and our obligations under the Global Covenant of Bears, of which all three of these overlap, obviously. But none of those were advanced enough, unfortunately, to come to the table for, for the ten year plan discussion. So, and there's certainly plenty of work to be done. And, and it would be, it's a cautionary note, I guess I sound, as we head into deliberations in May, that if people are current, are happy with our current financial strategy and debt ceilings, and want to max out the credit cards in May, when these papers come back around at the end of this calendar year and through to the annual plan process, we are definitely creating issues for ourselves in terms of being able to deliver on work streams that are well underway and critical to the city's success, I think, but haven't been able to be for timing reasons considered alongside our major, other major capital projects. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other speakers to the motion? If not councillor Newell, you want to speak? Thank you. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the report. The proposed litter compliance policy, litter practices and fees, is this your name? It's love. Do you want to speak to it, or are you hesitant just to take questions and take it as good?
Happy to take it as read and answer questions.
Any questions?
Litter on, the section seven, litter on private land. How are we going to determine whether a person is an offender or a victim in that environment?
So one of the analogies we have sort of sought, sought through is if you come across some litter, you have a litter control officer who gathers evidence. If the evidence is overwhelming, that the person's identification is all the way through it, or they've been seen doing the littering and there's an eyewitness account, then you have reasonable cause. If you go to a littering event and there's identification of a number of different people, then you don't have reasonable cause to believe it's that person. The person also has the right to object to a littering offence and come to the table with their, their reasons why it's not them, and to be heard at a hearing.
Will it be that formal? I'm, I'm thinking of people who own large tracts of land near fairly big and obvious roads, that at one AM, it's tempting to just biff your stuff over the fence. They could be the offender if they were going to go to the edge of their property and dump their rubbish, but it's more likely, in fact, that they've received it from somebody else. So are we going to have, in the way that we police this, a mechanism for, you know, without having to go all the way to a formal event, that it's, you know, it's kind of obvious this person's more likely a victim than a perpetrator?
So the litter control officer will conduct that, that investigation and interview people and talk to them.
So there'll be some discretionary activity at that level?
Absolutely.
Cool.
Thank you, councillor Hall, and then councillor Lord?
On page sixty five, under scope, the third paragraph, the D C C will apply this policy in public places within the council control. Then it goes on, this excludes land under the control of other public authorities such as N Z T A. This policy also applies to private land. Now, the reading of this, and my interpretation is, this policy also applies to private land. So that should go with the top paragraph, top of the paragraph, versus the D C C policy. So that should cover roads and private property, going by the way this is worded, excludes N Z T A, but then it goes back to the policy.
Are you wanting an amendment to the policy, or are you wanting clarity?
I understand the clarity, yeah.
Sorry. So you, that's your reading? So you want that amended before it goes out, or are you happy to have? Reading, yeah.
So there's, there's areas of Dunedin City that are under the control of Dunedin City Council, which includes areas where there are private properties. And there are areas that are under the control of other public authorities. So we've made an example here at the New Zealand Transport Agency, but there's also Department of Conservation and other public authorities that control and look after other pieces of land, that we are currently not providing litter, you know, collection from at the moment. So this applies to D C C controlled.
And that's how it reads?
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
So what I'm trying to, it seems to me from what's just been said, is that the council's interpretation isn't correct, and that public land, private land is excluded, as is T A and other authorities.
Privately controlled land is excluded from that?
Is that right?
Yeah, probably, probably needs some rewording, I'd say, to make it a little bit clearer.
So the question is, would you want it reworded before it goes out for public consultation or afterwards? So it's just whether that, noting that, that the amendment will include... We've allowed for, we've allowed for notification with amendments, typo amendments for clarity in the past. This is going to go out almost immediately?
Yeah, in order for the fees and charges to go through the auditing process, it is,
Can I just suggest that, subject to what everyone's going to do with this, but that, that's easy to clarify what the intention is. So there's no need for any delay. We need, we know there's a timing issue around this, and we can't afford to let it slide. We shouldn't be in the position we're in. Story be told. But if there's any confusion of exactly what it means, that can be clarified by staff before it's issued for the council resolution or any other consultation.
Yep.
Sorry, I've got councillor Lord is next, so, oh, okay. Councillor Lord?
So I just want to understand at the moment, so this is about D C C, like, as law stands at the moment, say, for example, if I was driving down the road and I heard a bottle, oh, well, maybe not a bottle, because that's dangerous litter. But if I threw some rubbish, like a McDonald's wrapper out the window, and a policeman saw me, he can ticket me for that, can't he? Like, there is a law against littering?
Yeah, there's a litter act nineteen seventy nine.
Yeah.
And actually, this is pretty much just adopting power for council under the litter act.
The same thing. So, so I have a wee question about the first one. On page sixty seven of the report, sixty seven of our agenda, it talks about household rubbish deposited in public litter bins or public space recycling bins. Now, one thing I do notice is that often I see people walking dogs, picking up litter and that sort of thing. It's not their litter, but they pick it up and deposit it in a bin. Now, I do the same sometimes, you know, I might park at the back of the farm to go and have a look in the river or something. You come back and someone has dumped rubbish along the side of the road, and it'll be in a bag. And it's, you know, on a number of occasions, just because it looks so flipping horrible, I pick it up because I don't want it looking like it's my farm, sort of thing, you know. So if, if people pick up rubbish, I have been known to pick up rubbish that's been dumped and put it in public litter bins, because I don't think I'd get any sympathy going to the Green Island dip and saying, oh, look, I picked up this rubbish. I don't think they'd appreciate or believe me. So I'm just not sure if that's a... And I can also understand if someone picks all the household rubbish and goes and forces it in a bin. I can see the problem, but I'm just wondering how you get round those sorts of things.
I guess that sort of feeds back to what Kath was saying before in regards to that discretion that a litter control officer would have around that. So obviously, if, you know, if someone's picking up a ice cream wrapper and sticking it in a, in a bin or something like that, then obviously that's discretionary. But if someone's actually got a whole lot of big plastic bags from the warehouse full of domestic rubbish that they're trying to shove into a bin, then, you know.
Yeah.
There's obviously that, you can't, it's hard to actually write that with a hard line in it. So there has to be some discretion around it.
Because I know there was a local farmer that's retired to Moskew, but he comes around the tory and picks up rubbish on a regular basis from the places where people, you know, next to the river and all those sorts of things.
The other question on that line, and sorry, is that you regularly work with community volunteers doing that, and give them bags for free, gloves for free, and collaborate to ensure that that process can be enabled? Is that correct?
We do that in jointly with Keep Dunedin Beautiful.
So councillor O'Malley?
Just getting back to councillor Hall's point, and just reading it myself, the way this reads to me is that the policy, the D C C's policy applies to private land. Is that correct?
Yes.
So I think it's not that ambiguous. But if you just simply said, within the council's control and private land, you would, and then you put the exclusions afterwards?
Yeah, it should be reasonably correct.
Straightforward.
Yeah, yeah.
Capture that? Noted, okay.
So, LaFiso?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your mahi, ongoing mahi. I have three questions. The first is, did the D C C used to employ litter control officers ever, historically?
Yes, we, we do have a litter control officer.
Officer, okay.
He's moved recently into another role, so we have to look at.
Another one?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the training and everything.
Okay. And when you, when you said that you, in the report, you said that you receive a number of calls to deal with this problem, how many calls on average would you receive?
So it's actually across three departments.
Okay.
So there's our sales, and the transport also receive litter.
Right.
And parks and recreation. So we're the three departments that work together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. And I just have a rather pedantic question about the definition of litter. And I note that in the offensive litter, you know, sanitary pads or sanitary products are noted. Why aren't discarded condoms or, you know, used condoms there as well?
Wasn't, it wasn't, didn't come up.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We actually borrowed that from another litter infringement policy. We, we borrowed that definition from another litter policy.
Thank you. Councillor Gary?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two questions. First one, we're talking about domestic rubbish and people shoving their bag of rubbish in the litter bin. How does that relate to travellers? Because travellers, we hope, will take their rubbish with them, but they've got to put it somewhere at some time. So how do you discern the difference between household rubbish from a house and household rubbish from a traveller?
Through the chair, by volume and frequency. So when you talk about household rubbish being deposited, we're talking about a regular occurrence of a household stationery, whereas when you're travelling, we're talking about that interim disposal that happens here, then here, then here around.
Right, thank you very much for that. And secondly, I just want to really understand very clearly, if this policy goes through, how will the application of it differ for the times? And Kath, you, you know of these occurrences where we've had litter dumped in semi-rural areas in the city. And we haven't had any luck in pursuing that particularly successfully for a whole raft of reasons. How will this policy help us enforce that versus what we have now? And I'm just trying to understand it really, really clearly.
It, it does give us something to point to, to say that we have this policy in place. But you do need to have proof positive as much as you possibly can. So like I said, you've got that discretionary power, but you can also go out and talk about the fact that you've got this policy, that we are going to get tough on it, that we, you know, will be looking to infringe, and we'll make examples of, you know, cases and publicise those. I think we, we need to, to show that we're really going to take action here, but the people who are going to be infringed are the people that we can positively prove have illegally dumped.
So it'd be pretty rare, wouldn't it, for somebody to witness the dumping, in my experience?
Witnessing is, is one way. There's also, you know, driver's registration, there's mail, there's, there's different evidence that can be gathered and to put together a case. But it would need to be a strong case to go down that.
So final question, and I'm aware of situations where a local person has opened a bag of rubbish that's been dumped on their property, and that has not been then possible to pursue it. And I don't think that's well understood. So we're going to, that, that actually, if you have some rubbish dumped on your property, it's D C C that needs to go through it and, and check that. So are we going to do some education as well alongside this?
Yeah, and I'll have a website presence as well that will explain, you know, if you, you see or come across a legal dumping, what you should and shouldn't do.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? I've just got one, one question, just in light of councillor Gary's question. Can CCTV footage be used for this, or is it not? Is it not one of those crimes that it is allowed to have that footage used for?
CCTV footage can be used.
Okay. Happy to move from councillor Benson Pope, seconded councillor Newell. Do you wish to speak to your motion? Any further discussion? No right of reply. All in favour, please say aye. Against Gary, thank you very much. Now have proposal to name a road off Esplanard-Warrington, Erles Court. Welcome Nick and Grant. Mr Sergeant, Mr Fisher? Would you like to talk to this?
Yeah, perhaps I'll just give a really brief overview in terms, there's actually four separate developments which are proposed for, oh, what should, for the committee for proposed road names. So I might just give a brief overview of all four, if that's okay.
Deal with them together?
Yeah, I'll just speak to them all, just, just regionally in the first instance. So first of all, good afternoon to the committee and all others in attendance. It's my first time putting road naming proposals in front of you, so a bit of a learning experience for me. So without further ado, there's four separate developments in front of you, which involve new roads, new road names. Three of them are hopefully going to be fairly straightforward. And there's one in there which potentially has a few fish hooks in it, which is the proposal to name new road off Rickenham Road in Moskew. And I'm sure many of the committee members will be aware of this development already. That's correct. Also, just to note that some of these involve naming of a private way as well. And as noted in the road naming policy, the committee does have some discretion in terms of naming of private ways. That about covers everything from my perspective as a bit of an overall brief.
Thank you, Mr Fisher. Okay, so the first one is the suggestion of Erles Court on, in Warrington.
That's correct.
And that is the one that is named after a live person at the moment. Which is contrary to the policy, but because it's a private way. Okay, anyone wish to ask any questions of Erles Court? Councillor Gary?
Just some clarification around that, around the, the live person thing. I was looking at the policy, and I noted that there's a name in there in the list of names that is the name of someone who's live but not the same person. Is there any clarification around that?
Oh, can you?
It's a little bit of a tangent, but I just wanted to know.
Could you point out that name, please?
William Dawson.
That's the old William Dawson.
Yes, I know, I know. But I'm saying, is there any clarification around that in terms of, it's the person it refers to, I'm saying.
The person it refers to is the old William Dawson, the jeweller, isn't it, who's now dead?
Yes, it is.
But he's dead?
Yes.
But, but it's a duplicate name of someone who's still living.
Yeah, I just wondered if there was any, no.
No, I, I think so long as the intent of the name is behind someone who's deceased.
It's all around the intent.
That's correct.
That's one, thank you for that clarification.
My interpretation of it.
On that, am I correct in believing that it's not that you're suggesting the names should be necessarily William Dawson, it may be Dawson Street, it's just that these are the people that we're naming them after?
That's correct.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Okay, we've got a recommendation to approve the name of Errol Court. Does anyone wish to move that?
Move that, just before I do that, in moving that, can I say, I think the list that was submitted as part of the paper in respect of the wider options was really interesting. And I think it's a really positive development in regard to the resource we have. And I hope, having heard one or two of these discussions, I hope it will enable developers to apply a slightly different focus to their preferred choices because there's a huge list, in addition to what we have already submitted, of local people who, for whom such recognition is appropriate in one form or another.
Thank you. I noted you, councillor O'Malley, is seconding that. Is that correct? Thank you. Thank you for your moving. Any further discussion? All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against carried, thank you. The next one is Abbey Field Close in North Tyree Road. Any comments or questions about that? Happy to move councillor Lord, councillor Newell. Any, do you want to speak to your motion? No comment? All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against carried, thank you. Next one is, and the two roads...
There's two new roads.
Two roads and a crescent.
And, oh, sorry.
Three.
Two new roads off and a private way.
A private way.
So, the two roads are two separate cul-de-sacs. And I'll refer you to page eighty-three of the agenda.
Yep.
Which shows a spatial plan of exactly where those are located. So, the proposal is to name Marjorie Lane, which is a public road, and then off that comes Aviation Lane, which is a private way. And further to the east is Melee Muse, which is a later stage of the development, but we're taking the opportunity to name this now. And that is a public road as well.
Okay, anyone, thank you councillor Lord. Yes?
So, in relation to the policy, so that last one that we did, we, or the first one, we didn't feel the fact that it's named after a living person.
Correct.
If there had been a road or a private way, you would have recommended a different name, is that...
That's correct.
So, in this case, where there's a private way, does that mean the town for the houses in that area?
That's correct. Essentially, this one is just a, it's a right-of-way, so...
So, we have to maintain or maintain some...
No, we do not, no, no. So, the maintenance and ownership of that is shared between the titles or the property that has right-of-way over it. And council does not get involved with it.
I've got a mover and councillor Hall, second and councillor Lord. Any further questions? Any discussion? Do you want to have a right of, do you want to speak to that, councillor Hall? Okay. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against carried, thank you. The number ten is proposal to name a new road off Ricketon Road East Moskew. I'm sure that we're all very aware of the history of this. Councillor Hawkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, happy for a few of our questions, but I would like to move that the committee name the new road off Ricketon Road East, Cuddy Close.
Second, thank you councillor Gary. Do you want to explain or talk to that motion?
Yeah, thank you. And I'd like to support the comments made earlier about what a useful history lesson the papers that accompanied this report have been and hopefully a useful resource as well. I thought that drawing a name out of a hat wouldn't have done anyone any favours, but my methodology is only marginally more rigorous than that. Firstly, I was trying to find a name on that list with some geographical connection. Mary Cuddy, a farmer of Saddlehill, shopkeeper of Moskew and now resting at East Tyree seemed to fit that bill. It seemed a useful opportunity to try and rebalance things in favour of naming our streets and significant landmarks after women, so she meets that bill from what I've read. And thirdly, it also, in a nod to the developer, does support their desire for an alliterative name. And Cuddy Close obviously isn't Wakefield wind, but does have the same, you know, joie de vivre, if you will, in the way that it rolls off the tongue. So, hopefully that is some small comfort to the developer in ceding their authority for naming this.
Thank you councillor Hawkins. Councillor Benson Pope?
I support this and I was one of those who had got to the draw it out of a hat because otherwise I hadn't exercised councillor Hawkins' assiduous reading skills and sputtered Mary. But the other thing that I did want to comment on was that the Wakefield wind attempt was a double fail, you'll recall, not because of the wind or wind or whatever it is, but also because of the objection to Wakefield, given his, shall we say, chequered history. And I thought it was unfortunate that wasn't documented in the report, just as a matter of how we got or got to the decision that we made. So, just noting that. But I'll be pleased to support the motion.
Councillor Gary?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had looked through the list, remembering the vigorous debate we had about Wakefield wind. And I'd found Samuel Mirims, who was involved in forming many of Dunedin's streets. But I was really looking for more of a local connection and I came across Mary Cuddy. And like councillor Hawkins, I was pleased to find a female name because there seems to be an imbalance in terms of the names that we seem to see. So, it was good to find a woman's name that had a connection with the local area. I had Cuddy Road, but I thought Cuddy Close was a very good alliterative attempt. And that's why I'm prepared to support this. It seems very appropriate.
Thank you. Any other comments or debate? I'll put the motion, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against carried, thank you, well done. Now, item eleven, I have to apologise, I didn't welcome our new GSO to the table earlier on, so I'll note that now. Thank you, Jenny. Councillor, now, Mr Sergeant, can you please wait there? Because I think you're going to sit down, please, near a microphone, because I think I'm going to need you very shortly. Councillor Benson Pope?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm really seeking assurance in respect of the pathway to purchase of LED street lighting as a result of the annual plan submission. Actually, a year after the last annual plan submissions from the Dark Skies people and some of the same personalities, we received the other day a lot more information, which, if you read the handouts, as I finally have, is pretty persuasive about the way technology is changing and also the desirability of getting the decision right, as in getting the decision amber. And I'm concerned that, I'm concerned to know that we are not going to be compromised and end up with a poor decision because we're already on the track to even warm white, vaguely acceptable temperature lights, when it would certainly appear from what's happening internationally that amber is a much better solution for all sorts of reasons. And, you know, and I'm asking because we are yet to determine our views on those submissions that were made in public. And at the same time, we've also got a process that's running in terms of the acquisition of the hardware, which I hope will be held until we've had a better chance to examine the amber options.
And just for background, as some of you will recall, there's already, I think, a motion on the book that we try and speed up the purchase of LEDs in order to get the benefit of the eighty-five percent government contribution. But that would not be available if we were to be going amber. And so, it does have some ramifications. We can't deal with it today, but it would be helpful to hear from Mr Sergeant about where we're at with that.
Certainly, yes. So, the guiding principles behind the procurement exercise are contained in the council report of last August. The debate about colour temperature is clearly indicated in that report, in that council's desire is to go towards a 3000 Kelvin temperature. So, that's our guiding principle, if you like. As for the mechanics of the procurement process, that mechanics is ongoing. And we are putting in place the service offering, if you like, towards market at present. We would anticipate that that will go into market sometime at the end of this financial year, which means we will see some rollout probably next financial year and probably in the new year by the time the market has been mobilised and we've made a procurement decision.
So, we can be confident that no decision will be made until well after we've deliberate, council has deliberated on the annual plan submissions that we received last week.
Yes, you can be confident that no decision will be made until that time.
So, the tender documents you're considering, if I may, are on the basis of 4000, 3000 or 2700 Kelvin at the moment. And is there, can you buy the 2700 Kelvin lamps which have been suggested, but it weren't available?
The debate has moved on since we, since we passed the council report last August and that the debate around last August was around, can we get a 3000 temperature Kelvin light that was on the government's approved list? The government have moved since then and started approving 3000 Kelvin lights for other councils around the country, so that's good. We haven't yet tested moving them further and that wasn't in the resolution. But I suppose what I'm saying is, because we're getting ready now, is that you could change your mind and give an even clearer direction as part of the annual plan process. But you do have to recognise that there's trade-offs between procurement timelines and that sort of thing. So, that's what we're balancing at the moment.
All right. But we have, we'll have the opportunity to do that according to what you've just said in terms of the timeline.
The tender documents are unlikely to be, because in the tender documents, we're specifying what we want from the market. And those documents are unlikely to be ready until June. So, there is time. So, we're not making any irrevocable decision at present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor O'Malley, is it along the same...
Just to follow on that question, it's around the NZTA co-pay. So, it's eighty-five percent, but then it only, it doesn't drop away completely to zero, does it? If we miss that deadline, it drops to...
Fifty-six percent, which will be our co-funding rate after the first of July, 2018.
And the other one is that I believe a lot of territorial authorities are having trouble meeting that first of July deadline. And that there is a general pushback to NZTA about can we extend that line, but nothing's happening at that end.
Many councils are making the same observation towards NZTA. And NZTA, however, has a legislative impediment that it can't promise what to do in future rounds of NLTF. Now, it can do when we get the other side of the magic date. So, many councils, including ourselves, are making the indication that you are making. But we won't get a decision on that until... The business case, however, stands up regardless of the funding rate. So, we should proceed that we want to replace our LED street lights because it makes sense to do that. And the funding rate is a secondary consideration.
Right, because it's somewhat fluid and it is potentially...
Because it is fluid and I don't know what the result will be.
Now, I have, I don't want this to be opened up. This is, matters under the chair. And I've been, and I'm really appreciative that you even answered these questions because it's not normally the process. If you've got more questions, so what we're just answering was whether there is scope to change our decisions about that. I'm really, it's really now up to the long-term plan deliberations to make or to seek more information. That was, I don't want to open up to much wider questions at the moment, if that's all right. Any other matters for consideration by the chair? And thank you, Mr Sergeant, very much for being, making yourself available to answer those questions. Councillor Hall?
What I was interested in is can council set up a website that us as councils can go to and pick up all the tenders that are going out in detail, the complete tender documents?
Can I understand for what purpose?
So, we know what's going out for tender and then we know what's in the tender. So, instead of having to come here and ask one of the staff, you know, what's this contract I mean to do over this, we'd have it all sitting out of fingertips.
I'll come back to you on that. I'm slightly concerned that that's getting into operational matters rather than governance.
No, it's public knowledge. I can go into Tenderlink right now, push a button and pack up any contract the council sent out.
So, why can't, why can't you just do that?
No, I'd like to be able to sit at home and do it. I don't want to have to go to work. But other councillors here might want to see what's going out on the tenders as well.
Tenderlink's public, so anyone can go onto Tenderlink and do it?
Yeah, it costs you 180 bucks a year.
Okay, well, I'll find out about that. Yeah, but I'm just slightly concerned that that is getting into an area of operational...
We're not telling you what to do. This is once the tender is drawn up and when it's released for tender. So, therefore, we...
So, I'll get back to you on that, about that. Thank you. Any other matters for, under the chair? Thank you very much for your attendance.